We, the citizens of the city of Gilroy. As we come to this room tonight as a complex human crowd carrying burdens, hope, joy, and trusting that you alone can hold us together, God, we pray for your love and your peace. Help us to trust you, Lord, more than our opinions, our fears, and even our accomplishments. May we turn to you for your truth. Lastly, fill us with grace, Lord, as these leaders make decisions tonight that will affect each one of us. Continue to remind us that all that this day is done, all that is done here this day, and all that is accomplished is for the greater glory of you. Please bless these proceedings. We ask for these things in your name. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. Moving on to item 1.6, Orders of the Day. We have none. Moving on to item 1.7, Employee Introductions. Finance Director Harjo Sengha will introduce a new employee. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, I have the privilege of introducing Nialy Martinez. She joins us in the utility billing team within the finance department as an accounting assistant. She joined us on November 3rd. Nialy will be helping us primarily here at the City Hall information desk and assisting customers as a cashier at the finance front counter. Nialy comes to us from the city of Santa Clara, where for the last five and a half years she's been working in the cashiering department, processing transactions, and being familiar with processes that pertain, similar processes as the utility billing division. She's very excited to join Gilroy, primarily because she's able to find a similar role that she had in Santa Clara here locally, and is able to drastically reduce her commute time as well. Nialy has a passion for continuing, continued learning and self-improvement, and she's already enrolled herself in accounting courses at a local college beginning next quarter. In her life outside of the full-time job, Nialy also is a recipient of the Sephora Scholarship to attend esthetician school and recently became a licensed esthetician. Finally, Nialy is a dog lover, and although she has no dogs of her own, she is an aunt to her roommate's two dogs. With that, I'd like to ask that you please join me in welcoming Nialy to our City of Gilroy team.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. I'm looking forward to working with all of you, and I'm excited to join the finance team in serving our community.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to item number two. It's ceremonial items. It's a proclamation. We have a proclamation this evening for Open Government Week proclamation. So what I will do is go down and read the proclamation, and then Shane is in the back. Right before you do your presentation, yourself and the other members of Open Government can come up. We'll do a photo with council right here in front. So I'll meet you, Shane, right over here at the podium. Okay, City of Gilroy proclamation. Whereas on November 17th, 2008, the Gilroy City Council passed ordinance 2008-11, putting in place by practice and endeavor the Open Government Ordinance. This legislative action established the framework whereby citizens are entitled to participate in their government by assessing, accessing public meetings, requesting public records, and petitioning the Open Government Commission. And whereas Open Government Week reinforces the city's role and commitment to the principles of openness and transparency, as well as to foster processes that empower the public through participation and access to public information. And whereas, an open and accessible government is the cornerstone of democracy, and it is critical in establishing and maintaining the people's trust and confidence in their government and their government's ability to effectively serve its citizens. And whereas, declaring an Open Government Week allows us to recognize the importance of transparency, participation in public meetings, accessing public records, and communicating with the Gilroy's council, boards, and commissions and committees. Now, therefore, I, Greg Bozo, Mayor of the City of Gilroy, together with the city council on this 17th day of November 2025, do hereby proclaim November 17th through November 21st, 2025, as Gilroy Open Government Week, and encourage all residents to contribute to an open government through council correspondence, comment at public hearings, and access public records to remain engaged and informed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Diana? Anne Marie? Sharpe?
All right, so I'm just gonna have you guys tilt in a little bit. Yep, tuck in there. And let's see, Councilmember Bracco, do you mind if I have you move to this other side? That way you don't get hidden behind the monitors there. All right, ready? One, two, three. One, two, three. All right, we're good.
All right, my name is Shane Semovia. I am a member of the Open Government Commission, and I'm here to present our year-end review for 2025. First, I'd like to thank the mayor, the council, for appointing our 2025 Open Government Commission members. We have a full membership now, and we're able to catch up with our 2024 Open Government requirements, as well as forge forward for 2025. Our kind of guiding light is through the OGO's roles and responsibilities. These are specifically outlined in the Open Government Ordinance. Talks about advising city council and providing information. We do that through council correspondence. This council have, has received two correspondents from the Open Government Commission. It's just our way of communicating to council members based on some recommendations or advice we'd like to offer. Also, briefings and presentations, just like I'm giving today. We develop goals, goals through work plans. We've developed four work plan items that, again, we're working through, and we're about three-quarters of the way there as we're winding up 2025. Our work plan aligns with the budget requests, so that, that is set out for 2026, 2027. Receiving and reviewing reports, those are public record requests. So staff receives those requests, they fulfill those requests, but as an open government, we review those requests to make sure that staff is, you know, getting the documents out timely, responsive, complete. And then we also serve as dispute resolution, if you will, or a way for a requestor to ask for an appeal. We serve that role as well as it comes up for final council approval if there was an appeal. And then last is additional powers. We have no other additional powers other than what's outlined in the ordinance, and those would be bestowed by the council if they, if they wished. So like I was mentioning, the four items we have on our work plan, Open Government Week, you probably saw my fellow Open Government Commissioners out front in the foyer, welcoming the public. That's just our way of creating community engagement, providing agendas, public comment cards, and responding to questions and answers. The next is Open Government Training. We've been working with staff, city attorney, on developing a comprehensive training module, if you will, and that's moving forward with great input, and we anticipate that coming out probably in 2026. The next is Translation and Interpretation Services. Again, you have seen the council correspondence that we provided, and there's more to come out on that as we make progress on it. And then the last that we haven't quite taken up yet, because we're trying to clear our, our board, is Code of Ethics. So regarding the Public Records Act, these represent the records we reviewed for 2024. As I mentioned, we didn't have sufficient members to have a quorum, so we weren't able to review those. We've since caught up. The slide that you see in front, you kind of show you the workload distribution. The two buckets that you see, one I call general requests, which are typical from, that go to staff regarding community development, fire, finance. The others are public safety. Those are police department-specific requests, and those are handled separately, but the Open Government Commission does review all those. This kind of just gives you a highlight of the workload as it crosses month to month. And then I, I added the top five, so it gives you an idea of, hey, where's all the workload resting? And just for your information, like, community development would be like permits. Others would be like planning project lists, code enforcement, environmental reports. Fire, that's incident reports that the fire department provides out, mostly for insurance claims. Finance would be expense reports, business licenses, and then the city clerk, she provides ordinances when the public asks, hey, do you have this specific ordinance or this specific resolution? Those go out in that form as well. And then we go on to 2025. This has been the distribution we've had for 2025. Last Thursday, we just wrapped up our last review for the quarter, which ends in September for 2025 third quarter. And again, that's kind of the, the workload distribution regarding general requests and police department requests. And then kind of our highlight for this week, of course, Open Government Week, which started with the mayor presenting the proclamation, and then it doesn't end tonight. We'll be at the library tomorrow. We'll have an information desk welcoming the public, showing them how to make public comments, how can they engage with the Open Government Commission, how can they request records, how can they watch a video of the council meeting if they're not able to attend here tonight? And then on Wednesday, we'll be at Gavlin College at the Free Speech Pavilion, providing students access to the same information and services we've been providing at, at the library, and what you saw this evening. And then lastly, I'd like to recognize the commissioners on your current board, Diana Bence, Anne Marie McCauley, Janet Crewley, she's not able to be here with us today, but Sharpie Sandu and myself. And I'd also like to recognize our admin specialists, or clerk, on the Open Government Commission, Kim, who provides us that support, Bryce, who's our sponsor, and then we had the pleasure of working with Stefan this past week. So all of staff have been very professional and quite helpful for us, steering us through all those reports we had to review. So pending any questions from the council, I'll stand by, but this concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Shane. Any questions for Shane by council? No, thanks a lot. Great presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, moving on. Next, we have another, item number three, Presentations to Council. This one will be the annual presentation by the Planning Commission.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Manny Bandau, and I currently serve as the Chair of the Planning Commission. The following presentation is a recap of the Planning Commission's work for the trailing 12 months. We, the Planning Commission, are a group of seven members appointed by city council to act as both a decision-making body for development applications, conditional use permits, and variances, and an advisory body to city council for subdivisions, planned unit developments, zone change amendments, and development standards, comprehensive planning studies, and zoning Currently, commissioners include myself as chair, Brian Downhour, Vice Chair, Patricia Benson, Stephanie Elliott, Anadore Kushner, Adriana Liengard, and Monica Valdez. Planning Commissioners currently serve a four-year term. The Planning Commission worked on many projects over the last 12 months. This includes four arc and site review applications, five tentative maps, and one variance. We'd also had training to learn more about the California Environmental Quality Act, hosted by our Assistant City Attorney, and Planning Commission training hosted by the League of Cities, League of California Cities. Now, here are some of the projects that we would like to highlight. In October of last year, we reviewed a arc and site permit for a contractor's yard at 230-260 Los Animas Avenue. The 3.8, 3.6 acre yard included 120 square foot restroom building to service the employees and associated onsite improvements, including a parking lot, landscaping, and areas to store outdoor equipment. Typically, arc and site permits do not require Planning Commission approval, but since this project is located in the Murray-Los Animas overlay district, these type of projects do require our review. And that's an image of the contractor's yard. In May of 2025, the Planning Commission reviewed 8875 Murray Avenue, also known as the Heatwave Project, an eyewear company that has continued to expand its presence in Gilroy. The project included the development of three light industrial warehouse buildings totaling 120,000 square feet to be used for office, warehouse, and light industrial uses. And that's a front view of the new corporate headquarters for Heatwave. In August of this year, we reviewed an arc and site permit to develop two industrial buildings, which included onsite improvements such as trash enclosures and parking. And that's the image of that property there, off of Maraca Drive. In January of this year, we recommended to the city council to approve a zoning map amendment to rezone 37 and a half acres undeveloped property from A1 Ag to RH Residential Hillside, and a tentative map to subdivide 37 and a half acres between Miller Avenue and Santa Teresa Boulevard into 54 residential lots. The project is known as the Ren Fu Villa Residential Project. When developed, the project would include 40 tract homes, 14 custom homes, and a clubhouse that would serve the owners of the 14 custom homes, and have a preservation area of approximately We also received training workshops. Planning Commissioners need to train for a number of reasons, which include legal compliance, knowledge of planning practices, effective decision-making, public service transparency, and best practices. We also received annual updates for environmental review, including CEQA updates. In 2026, we were, we will review current planning development projects and complete the zoning ordinance update. We will also continue to be training in land use regulations and relevant state laws. And before I wrap up my presentation, I'd like to thank our community development team for all their hard work and questions that Planning Commissioners may ask. And with that, my presentation is concluded.
Any questions for Manny? No questions. Thank you, Manny. Good job. Thank you. Okay, moving on to item number 3.2, Public Comment by Members of the Public on Items Not on the Agenda But Within the Subject Matter Jurisdiction of the City Council.
Thank you, Mayor. I will call up Anne Marie McCauley, followed by Paul Vompel and Greg Filios.
The city of Gilroy is blessed to have a mayor that the county and state leadership can trust as someone willing to actively start solving our unhoused problem. The recent abatements is an opportunity to finally address this for what it really is. We can no longer make fake claims that people aren't from here, that investing in solutions will make the problem worse, or that service providers and people like myself are somehow profiting from the industrial housing complex. This is all fake soundbites that are now coming back to haunt us as the county leaders hold Gilroy to the real facts that in the past, we denied help, refused to participate in solutions, and were unwilling to partner with local organizations. Our only policy has been shame, blame, and abatement. Gilroy's per capita numbers are a result of this mentality. Once we stop abatement, we can create exit strategies that hold everyone accountable, including the unhoused. The city can enforce ordinances when the tools are laid out for enforcement. We can start to help people instead of wasting time and resources moving them around. I want to thank Mayor Greg Bozo for having the courage to get in front of this and deal with the strong emotions and personalities involved. It's these people that have the tenacity to get directly involved with the challenging population. They are Gilroy's best resource and our only hope in actively solving this problem. I also want to thank Kelly Ramirez for your responses to the emails. This is an issue that requires a leader who asks a lot of questions. When we can answer those questions, we can develop solutions. The way you are showing up to this is a good example of how a city council member should represent and respond to its citizens. We appreciate you.
Paul, please.
Thank you for hearing me here. I've been a resident here for just about 10 years. I know, I know Gilroy's growing like really fast, like almost another California Gold Rush or something, but I think it's great, actually, and I think the people who are here are great. I just think they need to slow down the brakes as far as RVs on the road. There's like people that live in them that have just, I mean, drugheads, drunks, trash all over the place. But I had one, I put it on the road a few weeks ago, just put it with the four sales ton, just so I could sell it. And it wasn't there 24 hours before it got towed. And within 24 hours, that cost me over $1,200 just to get it out the very next day. The damage to the RV was in thousands of dollars, them ripping off a $500 door out of minimum replacement, that's missing batteries, tires, everything that got vandalized in that thing while it was being moved. So I'm just asking if everybody could kind of put on the brakes, like when I checked, asked the police department, white was towed, they told me it was caused, it was wet underneath it, and it was like, well, it rained all night, the night before, did you put that into consideration? Like, my phone number was on, but four shell sign, they could have called me or anything, but no one even bothered to check anything. Ground's wet, it rained, well, okay, it must be leaking something, they towed it. So I'm just asking if you could kind of maybe have the police station or whoever to do it and charge the towing, put the brakes on it a little bit. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Paul. Greg, please.
Honorable public servants, on November 5th was the State of the City Address at Gavlin Theater. Great turnout by, by a wide diversity of people, and we were very fortunate to hear an uplifting and unifying speech by our mayor, Greg Bozo. It was great that he pointed out different people in the community as being, as, as being people who enrich our community by providing services. And people like hearing, people like being acknowledged. He actually pointed out specific organizations and specific names of people. And so the people, when they hear this, they say, oh, the mayor knows what I'm doing. And so now, when they're out in the community doing things, they can say, hey, the mayor knows who I am, you know? It feels good, like when you can drop a name, you can drop the mayor's name or a council member's name during your activities. I was especially excited when Mayor Bozo pointed out the Gilroy Unified Schools Jurisdiction. I'm really involved with Gilroy Unified Schools Jurisdiction, and having the city council and Gilroy Unified Schools Jurisdiction working together is, is a win-win situation and very important. I'm looking forward to what's going to come up in the next year, as we, as we, we heard about what, what has been going on with the city, and by next year's State of the City Address, well, hopefully we'll have all kinds of good things to say, but I'm looking forward to it. And because the public, I think, trusts you, they, they recognize your wisdom and your care and your concern, and the integrity of doing the right thing. So I'm, so I'm, as a public member, as a public community member, I'm sure I'm speaking for a lot of the people who, who don't come up here and, and say anything, but we're looking forward to having, to, to supporting whatever it is you guys would like us to do in, in our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ron Kirkish.
Thank you for that, and I really appreciated the mayor pointing out all the five bats flying around. That was really cool. I received the last tranche of information regarding the Santa Clara County rejecting, prosecuting the criminal referrals, and I'm talking about Jeff Rosen, the DA, and for 2025, so I'm all caught up. Thank you to the police and, and the mayor and, and the city administrator. What was really interesting was, as you can see, this is the number of deaths, drug deaths per month, and for, for Santa Clara, and they're typically above and exceeding 20 per month. What's really eye-opening is that per year, the deaths for Santa Clara County, and this is from the Santa Clara County, this stuff, and what it shows is, back before he started his Ben in the Ark program, when he was prosecuting these things, the number of deaths per, for the five years was, went from 100 to a little above 100 a year. Well, in 2015 to 2020, there was a slight increase, but in 2020, after, and I mean, after he revised his Ben in the Ark, the number of deaths increased from what was 100 to over 300, 350. This is our DA. This is why, and this is why I'm upset, because we are not prosecuting these referrals, even though he says he is, he's not prosecuting them for drugs and drug paraphernalia. And so, don't let him fool you. I understand he had a meeting with the police here not too long ago and told him he's prosecuting 50% of them, well, he's not. He is prosecuting 50%, but that does not include for drugs and for drug paraphernalia. And, and now we're seeing about 350 deaths per year instead of 100. Thank you.
I have no further speakers.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item number four, Reports of Council Members. Councilmember Bracco?
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Fugazi?
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Marks?
Nothing to report, but we have had two birthdays since our last meeting, Councilmember Bracco and Councilmember Ramirez, so I'd like to wish them a belated happy birthday and hope you join me in that. So happy birthday.
All right, moving on to Councilmember Ramirez.
Councilmember Bracco is still older than me, though, so just. So I just want to share, first of all, I want to do a shout out to Miguel Flacher. He's a former Marine, and this young man felt the need to put on the Veterans Day Parade and had no idea how to do it, had very little help in terms of volunteers, but he did such an amazing job. Shout out to staff as well for helping him go through this process and making sure that this happened for our local veterans. So that was, that was something that I wanted to shout out on. And then I just recently had the opportunity to spend about eight hours riding along with Captain Maine and the B-shift crew out of Chestnut Fire Station. And I cannot share how impressed I was with the professionalism, the empathy, the care that they gave, the expertise that they gave every single time we went out for a call. And it truly is a, a different perspective to be able to ride along and see the work that they do firsthand. I'd like to encourage my fellow council members to take that opportunity. As you know, I did it with the police department as well. And I just want to say, Gilroy should be so proud of the men and women working for us. Just wanted to say that.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Klein?
I want to just say a shout out, the same thing with the Councilmember Ramirez about Miguel and the job he did with the parade and his whole team, and with staff and how they supported that, and it was a great event, so it's just way to go.
Thank you very much, and I just have one comment. I sent an email to the Public Works Director earlier this morning, and I know others have talked about how, how impressed they are of the paving program these days and this year, and I got another comment from somebody who works in another very large city that came up to me and said how impressed they are with our paving program this year. So great work to city staff and John Doughty and your department. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to item number five. Okay, moving on to item number five, consent calendar and questions. Okay. A public comment on consent?
I have no speakers.
Okay.
A motion.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Klein.
A second.
I have a second by Councilmember Ramirez for the approval of the consent calendar, excuse me, consent items 5.1 through 5.7. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bracco.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Fugazi.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton. Councilmember Marks.
Yes.
Councilmember Ramirez.
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes six to zero. Moving on to item number six, bids and proposals. Award two opioid remediation grants not to exceed $118,675 to Carry the Vision and $118,676 to Youth Alliance for opioid remediation services. Adopt a resolution amending the fiscal year 2026 budget and the opioid settlement fund by $237,352 and authorize the city administrator to negotiate and execute final grant agreements. Go ahead, Bryce.
Good evening, mayor and council. So the city of Gilroy signed on to opioid settlement agreements, and now receives periodic payments from those settlements and to our settlement fund. Current balance is $237,352. Council directed September 8th meeting an exploratory RFP, allows us to do this process, which is a little more flexible than our standard RFPs, be issued for opioid remediation services, mainly because it's not a service the city provides, there's no expertise on city staff to do it, and the scope of work is not readily available. The city received six proposals with varying types of programs and services. So on this screen are the proposals, the evaluation average score for each one, the number of program types offered, we'll talk about that here in the next slide, and the proposal amount. It's important to note that this is as an exploratory RFP, there's no set targets, the vendors are not really targeting or aren't really competing with each other over a set deliverable. So as we go into the next slide, you'll see that the program offerings vary between the ones. So really it's dependent on what council is looking for, which services are interested of council. Staff has made a recommendation, we'll go over that in a second. But on the screen is a table that was in the city staff report. And so we attempted to identify and kind of surmise the different services that each of the firms provide. The categories are pretty broad, what's inclusive of them, and as you reviewed the proposals, there's a lot of bleed between the different ones. So this is the best approximation, but as mentioned in staff report, this is a rough table, a rough categorization. Staff is recommending Youth Alliance and Carry the Vision, both from the scoring perspective on the evaluation proposals. They were all very, very quality proposals, but ultimately Youth Alliance and Carry the Vision were selected to have of the, you know, the two of the top three as far as number of programs offered and diversity in it. They also have a collaborative program, they're essentially taking on different segments of the community, adults versus youth, and other reasons are identified in the staff report for consideration. So fiscal impact is the budget amendment, basically appropriating all the funds available, $237,352. Budget amendment is required because at the time, the budget was being presented at council, we didn't have a plan or program in place to actually state what we're going to spend the money on. The funds to be expended is reimbursements. So this is one of the conditions of the opioid settlement funds, that everything is reimbursement-based. So funds being reimbursed is for qualifying expenditures under the final contracts, consistent with the requirements imposed by some organizations and agreements. So to get that in context, there's multiple tiers of review. So we submit our reimbursements to the trust administrator. Those expenditures are reviewed both by the trust administrator for the national settlements, but also California Department of Health. If approved, staff will negotiate final terms with selected organizations and execute agreements consistent with council action. Again, because, because there's such a variety of services, depending on which firms council decides to award to, those agreements will be negotiated for specific measurable, specific requirements for getting those reimbursement funds. So recommendation, staff is, the recommendation is to award the two opioid remediation grants to Carry the Vision and Youth Alliance. Adopt a resolution amending fiscal year budget and authorize the city administrator and their designated to negotiate and execute the final grant agreements. That completes the presentation. Happy answer and address any questions.
Councilmember Ramirez.
Thanks, Bryce. The reimbursement is that monthly, quarterly?
So we'll require submissions no greater than once a month. They can go up to quarterly. It will really depend on their program and what, how they structure. So knowing that the different programs will have different triggers for themselves, we'll keep it kind of broad. That's generally a consistent approach that we also have from the state of California, so we'll Caltrans system, we're kind of approaching.
And so I'm assuming that with these reimbursements, there will be information in terms of number of people served under the different programs that they're offering and things like that as they move forward for those reimbursements.
Yes, we'll be looking for measures across. So we're going to look for outcome measures, we're also going to look for their inputs as well, and make sure that the money's being spent on the things that are permitted in this. We're looking for what, what they get out of the number of attendees, but also looking for inputs as we can, a little harder to objectify, but you know, results. We're looking to see, well, how many people are served, or how many referrals and people stay in treatment, that type of thing, if treatment is one of those categories, as an example.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll go to Councilmember Fugazi and then Councilmember Marks.
So first question, I think you kind of answered it. We don't have to split this up, we can give all the money to one if we wanted to, right?
Correct, sir.
And when it comes to administering this, are any of these funds available to the city to, obviously there's some administrative overhead to follow up on this and issue payments, so does the city get any of that money to do that?
We can claim a total of 5% of program administration to those funds.
Are you recommending that?
It's tough because that carries a higher verification threshold and easier to challenge. If, if, if there's not enough to award, then yes, but our staff's approach is to try to put as much out in the field as far as serving and providing that service out. But if there's enough capacity, if council doesn't feel comfortable with issuing out the maximum, that is a possibility if council decides that is something that it feels that we should.
Would it be safe to say that it's easier to manage one group than two because you've got to get all these reimbursements and check them against?
Yes, administratively, it is easy to deal with just one.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Marks.
Yes, Bryce, well, these two groups come back to us maybe in six months to publicly tell us about their successes.
Yeah, if that's what, if that's what council's ours, yes, we can, we have the ability to set terms for those.
All right, great, thank you.
Councilmember Klein.
You mentioned that the two groups did a collaborative approach to this, so answering that question as far as one instead of two, it seems like they put their, everything together to, kids on one hand, but adults too, so they, they both have strengths, they're putting that together, it seems like, right? From what you could see?
That's from what their, their proposals are based on.
And I like the whole idea of accountability, there's a lot of that in this, so that, that's really good.
Follow-up question, one of them could use the services of the other, though, right? I mean, it doesn't, okay, just want to make sure.
Councilmember Bracco, did you, where are you leaning in, sorry? Okay. Let's go right to public comment, please.
Anne Marie McCauley, followed by Mark Ashford and Mario Guerra.
I read through all the applications and find it encouraging that there's additional resources available that would like to serve as Gilroy. I'll be reaching out to each of them so we can develop our network as a city. When I came across the opioid grant money, I specifically thought of Carry the Vision because they are physically located in Gilroy and I'm aware of their services and the people who are in the program. I myself am sober 30 years. One of the important components of long-term sobriety is community. While I think the other applicants have valuable services, Carry the Vision and Youth Alliance create community within Gilroy and even employ those who finish the programs. Gilroy directly benefits from these results when our community members get sober and give back. Local citizens reach out to these organizations to help integrate people back into the community in a healthy and productive way. Narcan is important for giving a person another chance at life. Carry the Vision and Youth Alliance help people build that life and sustain it. The city of Gilroy has many social problems that stem from drug addiction. We are lucky enough to have organizations with grit and commitment to address this challenging issue. The Youth Alliance has proven effective in communicating specifically to Gilroy youth who need to be educated on the dangers of opioids and prevention. Carry the Vision has specific diversion programs needed for those challenged by the criminal justice system, as well as other aggressive and effective programs that they continue to develop as stated in their application. Many of you campaigned on the concept of local control. Our previous city manager chose to accept this funding because he believed Gilroy would use it better than the county. Please vote to grant this funding to our local organizations where the control belongs and use your best judgment on how to split that up. Thanks.
Mark.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Mark Ashford, program director for Rooted by Carry the Vision and a lifelong resident of Gilroy. This work is deeply personal to me. 2018, my cousin Amanda died alone in a bathroom at Los Anamos Park from an overdose. Before becoming a healing circle facilitator, I had to confront my own trauma and addiction. By the grace of God, I was able to begin that healing during my last incarceration, and I continue through my work in this community. Our healing circles create a safe, informed, and supportive space for anyone affected by addiction, people who are actively using, family members, and those in recovery. This past year, three former participants completed training and now lead circles of their own. With additional funding, we can expand our outreach, increase capacity, and strengthen recovery pathways. Carry the Vision also trained peer mentors with lived experience who are active in both county and faith-based recovery networks, but we have to pause that program due to funding limits. This support would allow us to restore and grow these services, work that is urgently needed and truly saves lives. Thank you.
Hello, Greg, and all councilmen. My name is Mario Guerra. I'm a new resident to Gilroy now. I was, in 2022 to 2024, I was a resident at the Elmwood Men's Facility in Mopitas, and I saw firsthand opiate overdoses that were taking place there. There were several in the lockdown facility, several in the farm itself, and it was a epidemic like none other that anyone had ever seen before. Since I've been out, I've been out 18 months. I'm a, I started going to Carry the Vision, and I started as a participant of the men's healing circles. Later on, I became a circle keeper myself. I hold one at the reentry center right here in Gilroy every Monday, and I even hold a circle at the Gavlin College because I'm now a student there as well. Without Carry the Vision and Rooted, there wouldn't be a place, a safe place for people like me that come out of the madness and have a place to reside in peace. You know, looking at me now is nothing compared to what I looked a couple of years ago, you know? And it's a big improvement, but with places like Rooted and Carry the Vision, it only provides place, a safe place for some of us to come to and reside in and get a hold of life once again. Like I fell off in, in 2019. I was serving the Lord for 20 something years, and a life tragedy hit me, and I got, I got lost in the way. But to Carry the Vision and Rooted and my salvation of the Lord brought me back to where I was supposed to be, and I'm here now. And I'm just here to thank you guys for giving us time and addressing some of these situations. I know some hard decisions that you guys have to make with the finances, because the money, it's always hard decisions to be made. But really take that upon yourself and think that, like what's happening in San Jose, we don't want that here in Gilroy, right? It's bad in San Jose, but if, to prevent it from getting that bad, we need to make some serious decisions here now. So thank you for your time and, and pray for you guys to make the right decision.
Charles Good, followed by Mario Castro and Patricia.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Charles Good III. I am a lifelong Gilroy resident, as well as an employee of Rooted by Carry the Vision. I have personally and profoundly, profoundly been impacted by the opiate epidemic. In my role with Carry the Vision, I participate in healing circles with Mark, Mario, and the team, where I can let my guard down, receive mentorship, support, and encouragement to push beyond my own limits. For people my age and younger, generational and economic gaps can make you feel like older people don't get it. But in these circles, I've experienced that it is the complete opposite. With additional funding, I hope to become a circle keeper myself and continue investing back into my community. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. My name is Mario Castro, and I'm a healing circle facilitator at Rooted Carry the Vision. Our healing circles are lifelines for many, including myself. It creates connection, belonging, and a safe space for healing and transformation. With additional funding, we can expand services to include education and support for parents and mentors of youth experimenting with drugs. As parents in recovery and trained peer mentors, we are uniquely positioned to connect with these families. Our aim is to help participants build confidence and develop the skills to share their stories in therapeutic and healing ways. We have the programming, training, and experience. Our only limitation is capacity. With this funding, we are ready to expand and serve more families in our community. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, mayor and city council. My name is Patricia Marquez Singh, and I'm a proud supporter of the transformational healing work that occurs at Carry the Vision and Rooted. We all know the data related to drug use, specifically fentanyl, in our community of Gilroy. But people are not data. People, all people, every single person has a story, a story worthy of being heard. Investing in such initiatives like this allows us to come together to support people who are suffering from addiction and their families in a culturally responsive and trauma-responsive way that honors their individual path to healing with integrity, respect, and compassion. It is what we all need, it is what the world needs. Together, we can build a safer, healthier Gilroy. One family, one circle, one life saved at a time. Thank you.
Aubrey, followed by Sam, and then Ron Kirkish.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Aubrey Tasby. I am a new employee at Carry the Vision, a current healing circle participant and an unhoused resident in Gilroy. My boss says I'm often, I, my boss often says I'm a bridge, a translator, and a healer. I'm learning that healing begins when we are seeing exactly where we are and who we are. Even though I've been abated multiple times, most recently on Friday, I've been given a purpose beyond my own suffering that keeps me showing up. That is what Rooted by Carry the Vision does and what I'm learning to do as well. In my role, I help track participants our team supports through our public health contract and other projects. Harm reduction is connection, it's knowing what's happening and to whom. Our team stays closely coordinated so we can respond quickly to trends affecting people who use drugs, including fentanyl poisoning. Being housed, being unhoused makes connections, connection, communication, and hope incredibly hard. Receiving opioid settlement funding would allow me to expand my work into more direct outreach and engagement, inviting people to our healing circles and peer services, pathways that lead people towards recovery. Thank you.
My name is Sam Brown, also known as Pitt. I am currently unhoused in Gilroy and have experienced homelessness on, on and off for 20 years. After my mom passed from cancer in 2019, I felt hopeless and alone, which led me to Hopebound Pit Stop. I joined Carry the Vision in 2021, shortly after my brother had passed away from a fentanyl overdose. Vanessa and I were amongst the first in Gilroy to access and distribute Narcan during the pandemic. Out of desperation, we had to, we had to act. Out of desperation, we had to, we had to act. And that mindset continued at Pitt Stop and Rooted by Carry the Vision. We find a way to create a way and immerse ourselves in the community, listening and responding. With additional funding, we can expand our reach even further. Everything we do is built on relationship, trust, and connection. And that is where the healing happens. Thank you.
First of all, I'd like to thank all of you for coming tonight and speaking up. It's important. And I'd also especially like to thank Anne Marie. The two most serious drugs, they mention fentanyl a lot, but I think, you know, from my recent investigation with the county resources, meth is the most serious drug that people die from, and fentanyl is about second. It's a big problem. Thankfully, we are starting to see gentlemen like this and ladies like this wanting to turn their lives around, become good, productive citizens again. God bless them. We need to not only spend this money, we need to spend a hell of a lot more. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
I have no further speakers.
Okay, thank you very much. So, back to council. Further questions for, or comments for Bryce? I don't have anyone on the board except Councilmember Fugazi from before, but I'm doing a visual. Anybody? Go ahead, Councilmember Fugazi.
First thing I'd like to say is thank you for all the stories. It keeps it real, and it's hard for me to hold back the tears a little bit, I must say, because it's real. And I have a lot of addiction in my family over the years, so there, there's some realization coming from that. Part of the, the, the effect of having this money is because some citizens got involved and look at budgets and stuff, which is really great. I think it's incumbent upon most citizens to, to get as involved as they can to figure out how to help others. And sometimes it's just, you know, lifting up a rock and finding some money. We have the opportunity to, to figure out what to do with that. I personally believe that this organization, where all of these individuals came up and spoke about, is, is worthy of being the custodian of the money and using it to, to work with other community groups to, to throttle, so to speak, the money to the need that they see. And if that means youth, it's youth. Which youth and where and how, that's great too. And if it's for reaching the unhoused, I think that's a, a thing that we really need to do right now in Gilroy, as we know how many unhoused are addicted and how much services they need. And, and the outreach and having a couple of individuals come in here was really great on that as well. So, that's, that's the comments I wanted to give, is that I would really support and think that, also for the administrative overhead and everything else, you know, to award it to Carry the Vision, the entirety of it, and let them kind of work out what they need to do to meet the requirements of the grant, and then work hand in hand, one entity with the, with the city. Thank you.
Councilmember Bracco? Since no one else has their hand up at the moment, I know there was discussion of 5% that you talked about as well, and I'm not sure, you know, if we, because I, I get the sense that you were looking for a direction on council about the 5%? If we think that would be appropriate for staff to have?
If, if that's what council wishes. So, it would come out of the same pot, the same 237, 352. It's not additional outside of it.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Councilmember Ramirez?
So, I know from my past professional experience, a lot of times, the money is not worth the effort in terms of, do you feel that the, if you were to get the 5%, that the administrative piece to get that money back would be burdensome? Or, you know, is weighing it out? Is it worth it? Or is it probably more problematic to request it?
Uh, it would, it would have, to, to claim it would take some additional labor under there. It really comes down to a competing interest of whether to have it in-house or out. Certainly, there's not, the amount of workload and on top is not dramatically so. Most of the work's already been expended just getting the RFPs and proposals to hear on contract award. That's just maintaining compliance, so.
Okay, so I'm going to suggest that we don't go down that path. Would be my recommendation.
Correct. Councilmember Klein?
I would agree with that. I think the money should go directly to the need, and I think if it's more difficult for you to have to quantify that, I, I think it's better for it to just go there. I think they've done a collaborative approach to this, so to me, I, I go with that. I understand the single source where all the resources go there, but I think they're already working together in, at least in this RFP to get to this point. So, I would say that, to me, seems like the best approach to this. So, I'm for that.
And just one more comment about that. It, it would probably require, if we gave it to one organization and kind of asked them to manage the, you know, pass through to potential other partners, again, there's more administrative work. I'd rather see the money go to the programs.
But, so, but if I understand it correctly, for example, my, my initial intuition is if you awarded the money to one group instead of two groups, there would be less work for staff. Am I incorrect about that?
No, that's correct.
Correct, it's correct. So, awarding the money to one group is less work for you?
Yes, there's less administrative overhead.
Okay. Okay. So, I'm not sure where we are right, right now on, on the idea of if, it sounds like, on one hand, there's a suggestion to give the money to Carry the Vision, one group, and let them disperse it around this community to the folks that are meeting the qualifications. And I also heard to two groups. Did I hear that correctly?
Yeah, and I just want to make sure that you understood, the administrative piece to it is, I didn't, you know, I understand that it's less with one organization at the city level, but what I was speaking about was, then it's more, if, for example, if it went to Carry the Vision and then they, you know, engaged and went through, passed through to Youth Alliance, there would be more administrative responsibilities at Carry the Vision. That's all. Not-
With Carry the Vision, not with staff?
Exactly.
Okay.
And, and the wording, what we're looking at tonight, it's saying the two, at least the recommendations, so would we need to change?
We would just put that in the, in the motion, which is easy, if we want to, if we are recommending to give it all to Carry the Vision?
Well, I'm for the collaborative approach on this.
Let me mention one more thing, if I, if I may. If you look through the information as well with the other council members, you will see that Carry the Vision had a much more comprehensive and objective way of looking at the requirements in terms of results and put down exactly what their expectations are for results in terms of numbers. And you'll also notice who showed up tonight to speak and who was not here, nothing against them necessarily, but if you want to advocate, we've often said, you should come and speak to advocate, so.
Okay, so we're getting, getting close to where I'm going to ask for a motion here, but Councilmember Marx or Bracco, do you have any comments before I do? Okay.
And give the money to Carry the Vision.
A second.
Okay, so I'll, I'll say that back. So, I have a motion by Councilmember Bracco and a second by Councilmember Fugazi to award opioid remediation grant reimbursement based on and not to exceed $237,352 to Carry the Vision for opioid remediation services. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Fugazi?
Yes.
Councilmember Marx?
Yes.
Councilmember Ramirez? Yes. Mayor Bozo?
Yes, motion passes six to zero. So, I have two more motions. Can I do this? Okay, I have two more motions. I'm going to pull them together and do them as one. I will entertain a motion to adopt a resolution amending the fiscal year 2026 budget and the opioid settlement fund by $237,352 and authorize the city administrator to negotiate and execute the final grant agreements.
A motion.
I have a motion by Councilmember Klein.
A second.
I have a second by Councilmember Marx, I believe, was in there first. Uh, thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Fugazi?
Yes.
Councilmember Marx?
Yes.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Yes.
Mayor Bozo?
Yes, the motion's passed six to zero. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, moving on to item number 6.2. Award the interim aquatic center operator contract to Swan Swimming LLC for an amount of not to exceed $266,662 and authorize the city administrator to complete negotiations and execute the agreement. Bryce, again, take it away.
Yes, Mayor and Council, on September 8th, council reviewed options and authorized staff to issue requests for proposals to identify interim operator to Christmas High School Aquatic Center while the recreation assessment is underway. The interim operator contract will be for one year with a one-year option extension at the discretion of council, just to carry over services, make sure we're providing services while the assessment is done, and the assessment is looking at the, the forward future of recreation, including aquatics. The interim operation would provide services, oh, I just repeated that, sorry. So, we did receive more interest received than in previous procurement efforts for aquatic services. YMCA did notify us that they could not provide or expand their aquatic programming due to competing priorities, staffing, insurance changes. We did have a visitation from Team Sheeper and from Morgan Hill Aquatics when we did the site visit for the bid proposals. Ultimately, we received three proposals: Swimming Swan, Team Sheeper, and Sports Facilities Companies. Their scores are there in the staff report, but also here on the slide. Swimming Swan is the highest score getter at 93, followed by 84 at Team Sheeper, and then 47 at Sports Facilities. Sports Facilities is also the lowest bidder, and so in, in debrief with them, they, their understanding of the project and approach was different. They thought strategic partner come alongside and they help us develop the budget. So, that, that's why it was, evaluation was low, but their proposal was actually pretty quality for the product they were offering, just wasn't matching what we were looking for. So, Team Sheeper and Swimming Swan are very close proposals, but Swimming Swan came in at $266,662 with a 10% profit share to reduce that amount based on actual sales. And then Team Sheeper came at $350,000. So, fiscal impact is $266,662 from the recreation fund. There's no budget amendment required. The costs are within the existing recreation fund budget and actually potentially looking at some savings since we were projecting the budget based on uncertainty about whether there'd be a reduction in the, in the subsequent year. So, if approved, staff will negotiate final terms with Swimming Swan, which will feature a lot, a more expanded reporting requirements, and then execute the agreement consistent with council action. That completes the presentation. I have any questions?
Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Ramirez.
Thank you, Bryce. I know you have worked and spent a lot of time on this. We've asked a lot. This is something I think that we're all kind of passionate about. So, I want to thank you for, for all your time on this. I did speak with the COO of the Y, and their new insurance carrier will not provide insurance unless they own the pool. So, that's really unfortunate, because I think they would have come in with a very good proposal. My understanding is that we cannot change things now because the RFP process is finished. I think it's just unfortunate because Team Sheeper, I think, looking at the two offerings between Swan and Swimming Swan and Team Sheeper, I think that they would have probably been better for the community. Their, their, their pricing structure was more affordable, and the amount of scholarships that they were going to provide our residents and the cost of only $5 is, I think, significantly lower even than the scholarships that Swimming Swan would have provided. So, again, it's, it's unfortunate the way that they understood the process and then based their proposal on that understanding. It is what it is, but I think this is just fortunately one year, and we're going through the whole assessment for the recreation department and the needs to the community, so that's kind of where I feel.
Okay. Councilmember Fugazi?
Quick question. Why do you think that there were more people applying this time than when before it seemed like you said that there wasn't really good applicants?
Honestly, not sure, to be perfectly frank. We advertised the same, same firms as recreation advertised the last cycle, but we definitely had a lot more interest. Unfortunately, we haven't done the after, after interviews yet as far as, as far as any respondents or those that didn't respond that we submit. Usually, that's what we interview for, is whenever we don't get enough responses, we try to find out, why was nobody interested in it? In this case, I'm not entirely sure why we've got more interest than others. It may be, the only real key difference is that we identified recognition of profit in the proposal process. We identified, provide the management fee in the program, but we identified an opportunity to indicate an expectation that would be profit in the, in the margin somewhere for them. So, that, that might have been more interest, but again, that's very speculative on my, on my part.
When it gets to the negotiation next part, right, where you get the contract together, is there a way to ask for a larger profit share?
Uh, we can ask. Again, that, that can-
So, let me ask you this, then. If, so we can ask, right, which means they may not want to do it, but in the case of Team Sheeper, right, clearly, they have a much larger potential for profit because, number one, they used a much lower sales number, which is going to be probably wrong because probably Swimming Swan got it right, because they've got historical information to, to roll off of. So, their profit level is going to be higher. If we decided to pay the $350,000 contingent on them doing a certain amount of very large profit share over an amount to earn back some of that money, wouldn't that be possible?
It would be possible, but those terms would have to be, you know, at, at that point, it's speculative on their part as a negotiating, negotiating-
Well, clearly, they were interested. And clearly, they were interested in coming down on the, on the bid, which they can't do.
Yeah, the only thing we also have to be careful of is that, once we start negotiating the process, if we, if it's made to the point where it's, it breaks the equity approach to, to having those proposals come in. So, let's say we start selecting, if all of a sudden the arrangement arranges to the point where it meets, you know, closer to, then, then that, that gets to the point of, okay, are we opening, are we really just renegotiating, reopening that, that bid process in a way? Not explaining very well, but let's say, is the change in difference big enough where somebody could come in and then start litigation saying, well, no, you should have put it back out for recompetitions?
I just, I mean, I gave you an example, which is, we're not, we're not changing the fee, right? So, it's still the $350,000 fee. The key difference here is, say, at a particular level, our profit sharing goes up significantly thus that we might earn back, you know, $50,000 or $60,000 off of the, you know, off of our management fee.
I'd have to, I'd have to defer to city attorney. That's, that's a legal risk, and I'm not really equipped to assess that.
Mr. Faber, would you like to comment on that? Do you understand what I'm trying to propose?
I do, and I think I'm with Bryce on this. This is not strictly a bid situation where we're, we are bound to take the lowest responsible, responsive bidder the way we would be for construction contracts. On the other hand, at some point where we're completely changing the structure and allowing one competitor to, having submitted their proposal to now completely change it or trying to do that, I think we would open ourselves up to allegations of essentially unfairness. Now, that's not a good legal concept, but somebody who's officially done about it, I would think that they could seek to get a court of equity to void the contract.
Even just on the, the one term, which is on profit share?
Well, yes, it's one term, but you're talking about a difference in bids of $90,000 or something, and we're asking for one, change one term, which would have multiple tens of thousands of dollars of ramifications. It's one term, but it's a lot of money compared to the size of the contract.
The other, yeah, one of the other options is available to council if, if it's not appealing, is to, you can reject all the bids and reopen.
And what would that process take in time wise?
Probably looking, it depends on the structure at council. If we just reopen the bid just to the three that submitted, we could probably turn around in about a month. We'd probably hit the January 5th meeting.
So, that would be enough time for us to make a decision? So that would be enough time for us to make a decision?
Uh, yes, it'd be tight, but it's, it's possible. That we have much shorter response. Assume it says it's just to those bidders, we could keep a two-week response window since they're already familiar with facility, have already done, in, in theory, their due diligence.
Okay. That's good information.
And that does not put us at liability?
No, that, that, there would, there would be no associated liability.
Councilmember Bracco.
But I, I think it would send, uh, the wrong message to, to companies that, uh, want to bid on a job with the City of Gilroy. It's hard enough to find people that'll bid on this stuff, and now Swimming Swan bid once. We went back, they had to bid it again. Now they bid it again, and now some members of council want to go back and make them do it again. So I think it's very unfair because everybody knows what they bid, so now they gotta go a little bit lower. So I, I wouldn't support that.
Okay, we'll go to Councilmember Klein, then we'll go to public comment, and then we'll come back to council.
I would just say, I'm in the bid market. I, I bid stuff, and you have specifications, you have plan, you know, so, I, I know this is construction, but I only get one shot at this. And it'd be great to be able to send a letter to a contract, well, not just the contractor, but the owner and say, hey, I could do this if you would allow me to do the, to that, to do that. So I, I agree with Councilmember Bracco. It will send a message, um, that we don't want to send out there. They had their shot. This is for one year, and we're getting it at a better price, and so I don't see the need to take it back out.
Thank you. Let's go to public comment.
Hello, good evening. Um, I would like for you all to support, um, doing the one-year contract with Swim Swan. I think if you wait and go out for another RFP, uh, who's to say they don't pull out? Um, and then you're just spending more staff time and more money going back out for RFP. So I think for this year, I would personally love if you all just go with Swim Swan and, uh, don't wait till January for them, you know, to be kind of just trying to figure out what they're going to do staffing-wise. If you go with it now, they'll have enough time to get the staff and put the staff in place, and then you can all, they can start promoting their programs, and it's just, it's, it's the proactive and not reactive thing to do, I think, in this situation. Um, with that, I would love to see this one program stay around, uh, for this year and, and going forward. I would love for the City of Gilroy Parks and Rec to take it back. Um, I know financially it may be burdensome, but there are grants and there's funding that, um, I believe you all can find. Um, so I think it's important. I think it's for an individual, a child, 16-year-old, to have that first paycheck come from the City of Gilroy, um, being a lifeguard. I think that, that, it goes a long ways, and you really inspire the youth of our community. Um, with Swim Swan, I would love to see a junior lifeguard program, um, something that we can start building, um, the community members, um, into these lifeguards and, and swim lessons. And then la, um, also the east side of Gilroy, um, if we can get some type of partnership with the school district to bus students or, you know, residents from that side over to the aquatic center, I think that would be, um, super helpful. And then also just the aquatic center, or aquatics program as a whole. One of the meetings, Mr. Mayor, you mentioned Gablin College. Um, I would love to see, um, swim lessons out there if we can, some type of partnership, mentorship with, um, you know, maybe kinesiology students and, um, people out there. So, yeah, that's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you.
I have no further speakers.
Okay, uh, comments, questions for staff? I'm looking for a motion here.
I left there. Look, I did press my speaker button.
Sorry. Councilmember Marks.
Um, I have to admit, I, I mean, I do agree with Councilmember Ramirez on the number of scholarships that Team Sheeper was willing to, um, give. And then I sit here and I think, well, is that why their price was so much higher? Because that was compensating for all the scholarships. But I do agree with Councilmember Bracco. He's right. You know, when, when you have an RFP to put out, you do the best budget proposal that you possibly can. It doesn't give you the right to go back a second and third time and redo it over and over. So, um, I am, I am going to stick right behind Swimming Swan. And so, okay, you ready for a motion?
Sure. I'll make a motion. I think Councilmember Marks wants to-
A little second, yeah.
Go ahead. I'll entertain it and you make it. Okay, here we go.
Oh, all right, you entertain-
I'll entertain a motion to award the interim aquatic center operator contract to Swan Swimming LLC for the, an amount not to exceed $266,662 and authorize the city administrator to complete negotiations and execute the agreement.
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Marks. Second. And a second by Councilmember Klein. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bracco.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Fugazi.
Yes.
Councilmember Marks.
Yes.
Councilmember Ramirez.
Yes.
Mayor Bosso.
Yes. Motion passes six to zero. Thank you. Moving on to item number seven, introduction of new business. Introduce the first reading by title only in ordinance to amend board and commission terms
I was told I had to present at the podium tonight. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, city staff, and members of the community. Tonight I'm presenting an ordinance for first reading that would amend the terms and appointment cycle for the city's boards and commissions. The City of Gilroy conducts annual recruitments, um, to fill vacancies on its boards and commissions. Currently, member terms are staggered, um, between even and odd years resulting in yearly recruitment and appointment cycles. So staff is recommending a one-time adjustment to current terms to achieve the following: to streamline and simplify the city's recruitment and appointment process, enhancing consistency across all city departments, to allow city staff to focus during election years on council transition, onboarding and end-of-the-year legislative requirements, as well as avoiding conflict with election activities, improve outreach and engagement opportunities for the community, and to allow the commissions to maintain experienced commissioners, which helps support effective onboarding and helps to preserve the historical context of ongoing projects and policy discussions. Future terms will remain the standard four years. Midterm vacancies will continue to be, to be recruited and filled following the city's standard procedures. Um, there are also three special term adjustments that are requested, which have been noted in the staff report. So tonight, staff is recommending that city council introduce an ordinance for the first reading and waive future reading, extending the current terms of all board and commission members whose terms are set to expire in even number years by one year to align all future term expirations with odd number years. Upon adoption of this ordinance, the city clerk will update all records and recruitment materials accordingly, and I am available for questions.
I, I think that there were two in the staff report, there, two people that had two names in terms of people that had been contact and, and-
Yes, there were actually three. We had two for the Personnel Commission and one on the Library Commission, that we were requesting a two-year, um, extension.
Okay. But then my question is on all of the others who would have extensions. Have they been asked if they're okay with this?
No.
Okay.
Not, not yet.
So then, um, it would be, if, if they weren't agreeable, it would, there would be kind of an adjustment period, getting people on, and then they would come on for, um, a longer period then? Instead of them being extended a year, then the newer person would come on for like five years, for example?
Uh, no, no, we would probably do a one-year recruitment.
Oh, okay, just to cover the one year. Okay, perfect. Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Okay.
Can I say just for the record also that the, the ordinance that was in the original packet a week ago has been changed slightly in clerical ways. No, no substantive change, because some of the wording's been changed.
Okay. Was there any public comment on this topic?
No, I have no speakers.
Okay, I don't imagine there's any further questions for Kim. Okay. Thank you, Kim. Great job over there. Okay, um, if there's no further questions, I will entertain a motion to read the ordinance by title only and waive further reading of the ordinance. I need a motion, I need a motion and a second on that.
So moved.
Okay, so I have Councilmember Ramirez, and seconded by Councilmember Marks. Roll call, please.
I'm going to read the title of the ordinance.
Oh, sorry.
An ordinance of the city council of the City of Gilroy amending the terms of service for city boards and commissions to align expirations and recruitments with odd-numbered years. Councilmember Bracco.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Fugazi.
Yes.
Councilmember Marks.
Yes.
Councilmember Ramirez.
Yes.
Mayor Bosso.
Yes. Motion passes six to zero. And I'll also entertain a motion to introduce the ordinance of the city council of the City of Gilroy to reflect all future terms will expire in odd number of years. I need, I have a motion by Councilmember Klein.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Ramirez. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bracco.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Fugazi.
Yes.
Councilmember Marks.
Yes.
Councilmember Ramirez.
Yes.
Mayor Bosso.
Yes. Motion passes six to zero. Thank you very much. Item 7.2, receive budget report for the first quarter of the fiscal year '25-'26 and adopt a budget amendment resolution. Harjo.
Evening, Mayor, councilmember, members of the community, Harjo Tsang, the Finance Director. The, uh, item before you is the fiscal year '26 first-quarter budget report. Not a whole lot of activity in the first quarter, so, um, the, uh, presentation will focus on the key updates that are mentioned with respect to the general fund forecast and, uh, budget adjustments, but I'm happy to talk about any of the specifics that I've included in the narrative of the staff report, if you, uh, so wish. Uh, the current, uh, biennial budget fiscal year '26-'27 was adopted in June of 2025. Uh, in October, we presented you with the preliminary fiscal year '25 year-end report, and tonight, we're before you presenting the first-quarter report. Again, as I mentioned, the, uh, presentation will focus on the key forecast updates and the budget adjustments. Happy to talk about the other items as well. Uh, one of the notable updates, uh, last time the city council received the general fund forecast was with the budget adoption in June of 2025. Uh, to that forecast, uh, in November, we have made primarily, uh, uh, three related adjustments to the forecast. Uh, one of them is the sales tax. Uh, city has received an updated quarterly, uh, sales tax report, and based on the updated forecast for fiscal year '26 as well as subsequent future fiscal years, there is a reduction of about, uh, on average of about $400,000. So we have adjusted that to the base, beginning in fiscal year, uh, '26, and it is also carried out, uh, all the way through into the forecast. The other adjustment is, we reported in October, uh, the preliminary Calpers investment returns, uh, the impact of that on the unfunded accrued liability. What we did was, um, basically 11.9 is what they reported for fiscal year, uh, '25 and did June 30, 2025. Uh, what that did to, uh, the discount rate, assumed rate of investment is 6.8, so if they exceed, what that essentially does is lowers the city's unfunded accrued liability, also known as UAL. So that UAL, as of June 30, 2024, is $115 million. Uh, with the 20, uh, fiscal year '25 returns, that UAL is now $101 million. What that effectively does is it also lowers the city's future, uh, UAL payments, um, in the future years as well, uh, thereby reducing our forecast in future years. And there's about a five-year ramp, a period of either when your payments go up or when they go lower. So they, they fully take effect by fiscal year, uh, '30 and '31. So we made that adjustment in, in the forecast as well. And last but not least, uh, we also mentioned, uh, the adopted forecast in June included utilization of the city's Pension Section 115 trust, beginning in fiscal year '29. Uh, with the Calpers investment returns in fiscal year '25, uh, we forecast that we will be able to tap into that trust a year sooner. We're now assuming in fiscal year '28, uh, beginning, uh, again, beginning in '28 on an average of about $1 million, uh, a year. So, uh, what that does to the operating margins forecast, uh, again, as I mentioned, primarily the impact of negative, uh, operating margin you see in fiscal year '26-'27, which are the two adopted budget years related to the sales tax. We had some positive operating margins in fiscal year '26. Um, that is now going to be negative by about $100,000 in '26 and then $400,000 by '27. However, subsequent future years, uh, with the Calpers investment return adjustment plus the utilization of the trust, we essentially had, uh, neutral operating margins. We're actually seeing positive operating margins, so, which is a good, good news, uh, on the horizon. So, um, if, uh, things, um, stay the course, uh, that is an indication for us perhaps in the next budget cycle that, uh, we should be able to leverage some of those operating margins to reprogram them to either expand services. Uh, one of the examples, as I mentioned in the staff report, again, uh, priority for the council is we're building a fire station. Um, you know, we, we should be able to start leveraging some of those operating margins to increase, incrementally increase the staffing for that station. So, uh, that's an example, again, um, to vet it out as part of the next biennial budget development process. Uh, that's really the key updates as of now for the general fund forecast. Um, we will, uh, again, monitor, we, we update the forecast, uh, we'll try to update the forecast every quarterly budget update as we receive either, uh, sales tax reports or other tax revenue, uh, updates, uh, primarily. Um, so the next, uh, next update you can probably expect in February or March of 2026. Uh, the other item, uh, included in the staff report are budget adjustments. There are primarily three. Council approved a just-of-property purchase, which is the, uh, our, uh, property adjusted to the Corporation Yard in June. Uh, the escrow didn't close, so this is really a cleanup item. Uh, from a, from a, uh, financial standpoint, uh, we just need to reappropriate those dollars to match the expenditure in the correct fiscal year. The other two items are, uh, one is for Economic Development Assessment Study. We're recommending $60,000 to be appropriated out of general fund, uh, to, uh, basically conduct an assessment, get the technical and the statistical data, uh, studies completed, uh, so that way, uh, if and when our new Economic Development Director is coming on board, they have some data to hit the ground running. So, um, we're recommending that we can at least start that process now, uh, to initiate that work. And the last but not least is a election outreach communication. We're, uh, requesting, uh, $12,500, uh, beginning in January 2026. As you know, uh, just the council and the community went through the dis, transition to district-based elections. There are three, uh, districts that are going to be programmed in in, uh, November 2026, so therefore, uh, we're recommending, uh, basically asking for a budget to conduct that outreach, to conduct either mailers, uh, utility building inserts and things of that nature. So that would be at expense of the general fund as well. With that, that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Harjo? Questions for Harjo? Of a comment?
I have no speakers.
Okay, I'll go right to it. I'm going to entertain a motion to receive budget report for the first quarter of fiscal year '25-'26 and adopt a budget amendment resolution.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Bracco and a second by Councilmember Ramirez. Roll call, please.
It was Marks.
Marks.
Councilmember Bracco.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Fugazi.
Yes.
Councilmember Marks.
Yes.
Councilmember Ramirez.
Yes.
Mayor Bosso.
Yes. Motion passes six to zero. Moving on to item number eight, city administrators' report.
Yes. I'd like to congratulate three of our employees. Uh, they graduated last week from the Santa Clara County Leadership Academy, which has been going on many years. This is an eight-month intensive training program designed to build leadership skills and grow the next generation of our local government leaders. Forty-three employees from various disciplines across 17 agencies in the area made up the academy. In addition to the training, each participant works on a project team with the team presenting their project to the Santa Clara City Managers Group, which I was sitting on, so I got to see them all. Uh, and they complete four coaching sessions with a designated professional development coach. We had three graduates, as I said. First, Fire Marshal Jonathan Crick from the Community Development Department, Human Resource Analyst Jason Davalos from the Administrative Services Department, and Deputy Public Works Director for Operations Matt Jones from the Public Works Department. So congratulations to all of them. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it.
Okay, moving on to city attorneys' report.
Yes, a brief report on a case that we have at the California Supreme Court. I'm informed here that we've been litigating with the Law Foundation over the Public Records Act matters since 2019. Uh, there are actually no documents to be produced, and there haven't been any since 2019, but nonetheless, litigation proceeds. We won 100% at the Court of Appeal, but the California Supreme Court granted a hearing. And two weeks ago, on November 4th, we had the oral argument at that hearing. The matter had been fully briefed for a year now, but it takes- The matter had been fully briefed for a year now, but it takes them that long to think about the briefs and digest them, and then they asked for oral hearing, which I did. That's why I was not here at the meeting on November 3rd, because I was up in San Francisco for the hearing. So we had the hearing, and it was a very interesting experience. It was webcast or telecast live, and I've been waiting to report, but I want to pass on a link, but they haven't posted it yet. Very frustrating. Every day I look to see, when are they going to post the link to the webcast? And I think you all might find it somewhat interesting. Hopefully, they will post the link this week. We are cautiously optimistic, which is a lawyerly way of saying it seemed to go well. The justices were all heavily engaged. All seven of them asked questions, which is not at all common at that level. But we, as I say, we are cautiously optimistic. My wife, who was there, feels a little better than that about it, but I'm being cautious. But we'll pass on the link for you. Anybody who wants to watch, I think they'll find it entertaining. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item number 10, closed session.
All right, let me continue. We have two of them. Item 10.1 is conference with real property negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8 and Gilroy Code Section 17A8, property at 7491 Railroad Street. Negotiators LeAnn McPhillips, Sharon Goey, Victoria Valencia, under negotiations, price in terms of payment for purchase and/or lease. Item 10.2 is conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation pursuant to paragraph four, subdivision D of Government Code Section 54956.9 and Gilroy City Code Section 17A11, subdivision three, one case. Now, these have different processes under our OGO, so I think the first thing to ask is if there is any public comment.
I have no speakers.
All right, then. For the first one, the real property one, we do not have to do anything until we go into closed session. Once we go into closed session, we have to take a vote to remain in closed session, and that is reportable. For the second one, we have to vote to go into closed session, and this is under the OGO. And it's my advice that it would prejudice the position of the city legally to discuss the matter in open session, and therefore I recommend that we assert the attorney-client privilege and do go into closed session. So we need a vote on that on item 10.2.
Just a thumbs up?
Yes, thumbs up.
Everybody okay going in? All right. Thank you.
The vote is unanimous, so we should now adjourn to closed session.
Okay, we'll take a little break and come back at 7:45, please.